Folks, we're up and running, live stream, video. On YouTube service that I've got by charge to the township. Available for your research and anything else you'd like to see. Welcome to all the people in YouTube. Today is Ascension Day, religious holiday, and next year I'll be trying to make a move that we do not have a meeting on religious holidays.
We will call around some person who provides workshop meeting during the morning, seven o'clock, the first to a pregnant agent to sign us for military personnel.
Lord Jesus, to defy the United States of America and to their body for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, in the union of justice crawl.
Thank you. All right, any citizens concerned, if anyone has a concern, give the name and address please for the record, any citizens concerned, it seems. Name and address, please.
Robert Horst, thirteen thirty-nine Old River, just wondering what was the update on the traffic control on Old River Road?
So it's been provided, are you talking about for future, for future use? So what's been provided with so far is the plan, I've given that to the chief, he and Officer Schladman have taken a look at that. They both believe at this point in time that that would be adequate to keep the traffic reduced on that road, particularly, we're concerned with the heavy truck traffic, as you know.
Yeah.
And we also know we're dropping that speed limit in there to twenty-five.
Okay.
So I think once this bridge project is replaced next year in twenty-five.
Yeah.
That should hopefully alleviate that, and I believe the chief and I have talked about some enforcement options out there. To set that tone that these heavy trucks, they just can't take that bridge, it's a sixteen-ton rated bridge.
Yeah.
One, one or two heavy stone trucks in that bridge is going to be in trouble, so we're going to keep an eye on it. Again, the plan looks good, and I was out there for their meeting, so I think they've got the right things together.
Just now I also reached out to the administration in Exeter, they have scales, portable scales, and they're willing to help us and anyway possible.
Oh, cool.
We've seen that plan, the board has seen that plan.
No, sir, I haven't.
Is there any reason we haven't seen that plan?
I don't agree with you.
Can I get those plans at the same time you give them to the chief?
Sure, I don't see why not.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if it does it really.
So all, all for those plans, are you?
No problem, thank you.
All right, any other citizens concerned? All right, in your kind of correspondence then, we have stuff in the village library. Rich, I have a question, did we not give them money last year?
We did not, sir, apparently, they never sent us a letter, that was not actually on our end. There was a change in their leadership, didn't send a letter into us, and that's why they noted we didn't send anyone. So they're asking for a pretty, they look at their per capita amount, that's a pretty substantial fee in there. I think it was seventy-five hundred per annum is what we were given.
Yeah.
And I would remind the board, depending on what you would like to do, we do also have a bit in the library, I believe in Hertzler as well.
On those.
Yes, so there are some other options for our residents, not just that, in the township, you might not use that particular library facility, so.
Now we have our packet of wing and shot for people. I don't know if anybody looked at that yet. I guess some money for pheasant quail, all that kind of stuff. It's not made on that property?
No, no, sir, so actually, just to update the board on this, in speaking to Ryan earlier today, as you notice, he's not here this evening. Ryan let me know that they had presented to Conarben last night, Conarben, of course, mentioned it, and I looked at, there's a process involved with this. They're believing that the board could just sign off on them using a particular piece of property as a regulated hunting grounds. This particular piece of property that they're requesting to utilize in that way actually is the exact same property that we've been discussing over the last few weeks, the Hertzler Farm. With reference to, of course, a change in our ordinance, rezoning ordinance, to allow magazines on the property. Not here this evening, we did tell him, you know, we put this letter before you, original letter was actually addressed to Rockstoneia. We did, you know, get that corrected, that's an easy misunderstanding, I'm sure, and then they provide us with what they do. So at this point in time, I think it's really, more of your information, I believe, would probably go before the zoning area board for a decision, I'm not quite sure which direction that would go in, but.
Depends on what they ask for, the, I don't think that use is covered in the United District, but I haven't worked, I.
I don't think so either.
I haven't reviewed the ordinance, so I can't say for sure.
Okay, so we'd have to review that, and I didn't have an opportunity to do so. I think when I last spoke to Ted, and he had mentioned that he was looking at, especially with the primary use being particular, primary second use as the magazine, whether or not this would be something possible underneath that.
We saw it there, yeah.
Okay, you'd like that for the regular meeting, then?
Yeah, unless anybody has a strong thing out. Are you related to the wing and shot?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we're just talking about you. Would you like to introduce yourself and just summarize what you're thinking?
My name is Mike Mar, this is Tom Gassberry, I'm the secretary, these are training.
Good evening.
So we have a group of about six guys on the Hertzler Farm, and we're trying to lease it, but we have leased, we have the property adjacent to the lease. I was at a meeting last night over at Caverna, and I talked to those guys, so we guess Ted's here.
Ted would be available to you in the office, I think, and I believe the receptionist there, the township office, probably told you, he's in two days a week. We can also, if you want to call him tomorrow, make sure you do have his number down in Morgantown, which is where his office is based out of, but he's in our offices on Tuesdays and Thursdays from twelve to two.
Okay, so I'm working with Jeff too, for that township, and he's pretty much put it back to, I believe we have to give them the information. It's something they're going to get back to us what we need to do. So basically, we're a group of guys, we take birds, we put them out, and we hunt them. So technically, I can do this with an owl sanctioned from the game commission, but the regulated shooting grounds basically lets us put out more birds. And we can put them out before the season starts, and it's safer for us to train our dogs. So it's a small group of guys, and it backs up the game lands where they do stock farms. And everything, we do all the hunting, I mean, all the game commission moves, so it's not like we're changing any rules or anything. We're just asking for permission to put out different birds and more quantity.
So physically, this, this is wing and shot, but we're basically doing it to hunt dogs and train your dogs.
Correct.
You're not, this isn't, let's go in, put the, put the critters down, and just go annihilate.
No.
Okay, yeah, but if you don't hunt dogs, or you don't have a hunting dog, you're not going to think like you're thinking.
Correct.
Okay, so even when I first heard this, I'm like, really, you want to go in there and just, and it's too close to everything, and then I'm going, wait, you just said this, it's like, no. You want to be able to train your dogs in a safe manner.
Well, it's a little dangerous up at game lands because it's like a battle zone, every Thursday, Wednesday, we're shooting each other, and this is a little bit more of a gentleman's thing, it's safer to train your dog and work them.
But it becomes a different animal when you explain it, as we're going to train dogs to hunt pheasants, quail, chuckers, whatever.
Correct.
So like, short hairs, so my perspective just went snap when you said about training dogs. Because you need to put that in the forefront of it, not.
I believe I sent everything to Todd, I sent everything to the secretary, the breakdown of my hunt, everything.
Yeah, we have that.
I have, it's in here, okay, it just was, when you presented, I'm like, you might want to, like, start with that part of it, just because it gives a different perspective on what you're using it for. It's a group of you, hunt dogs, and we'll train them.
Correct. The, the club's been in existence since the nineteen sixties. Originally, we were on a property down in Honeybrook, it was owned by Dr. Jim Cox. So if any of you aren't into wing, wing shooting and all, very famous gentleman. In those days, most of the authors were the writers for Field and Stream. The rest, they would come up to that property and test out equipment, and when they were Dr. Cox and guests. A portion of that property was sold to Telhi Senior Living. Just a little tiny strip, but under the regulations, we have to have a hundred continuous acres to qualify as the preserve status. And so for a while, we were up at the old writing regulators. And we were on that property for probably five or six years. That subsequently sold for development. And again, we're kind of looking for a home. So where we can put birds out, we can run our dogs, we can train our dogs. Not all the members, but the majority of members are NAFTA folks. Mike's got short hairs, I have Gordon's. But everyone there, everyone associated with us are longtime Upland hunters. And we've been doing this, Mike's probably newer than I am, I've been involved with the club for almost twenty years now.
I guess this is in the process of being looked at by codes and. So I mean, if it's in the process, I mean, we have a meeting, and it's what, two Tuesdays, right?
Of course.
We could have more, maybe more information in what we.
So, you do, the only thing I want to make clear is that we're not, nobody's paying us for hunting. So it's just a group of guys recovering our costs, and that's it. Nobody besides a couple bucks for leases, nobody here is making any, it's not a commercial hunting place.
No.
It's just recreational, it's probably only going to be six guys, and divided by the two properties, and the way we do the fields, it's only going to be three guys on each property. So we have a combined of three hundred and twenty-seven acres, right now that backs up the game land.
Yeah, I mean, we just have to go through the process and stuff, and I mean, hopefully, two Tuesdays doesn't, you know, affect you too bad.
Yep, I mean, you know, it's not like golf, you know, it's not the way, it's not a waste of a good walk, because you're still watching your dogs work, no matter what happens during the day. Whether you're, whether you're a good shot or a lousy shot that day, it makes no difference, it was a good day to be out with your dog.
So we can, I guess, put that on the agenda for, and then get that information and give it to us and everything.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
You guys don't have to listen if you want to answer the rest of it.
Up to you, I'm, I'm just, I'm just back, I was on, I was out west for, at my ranch for two weeks, and I'm a little behind on ketchup and ketchup.
We're going to read what's there, so.
And, yeah, any questions, please.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We haven't had the thing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe you have some more information.
Oh, we have, we have it here, yes, yeah. I think you, Rich, I, you have.
And I do, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board, presidents. Let me first for my agenda with, since my first three, my items are spending money out of the training budget. Current balance of the training budget is three thousand and sixty-three dollars. Therefore, all three requests, R A D and C, are covered in that budget, which is four-ten, four-two-two. So A is I'm requesting a motion to authorize Sergeant Rimby to attend patrol rifle instructor school through the NRA. That's from August fifth through the ninth in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. The cost of that is six hundred and eighty-five dollars, plus the cost of his salary, obviously. Officer Rimby is our handgun shotgun instructor, training him since we lost our prior instructor, which is Mark Elliott, who retired. So anything Sarge needs to have, everything that we carry is that patrol rifle instructor course. Then B, I'm going to be requesting a motion to authorize Officer Jeb Cooper to attend police supervisory and service training through Penn State Justice and Safety Institute from July eighth through July twelfth. That's a cost of eight hundred and fourteen dollars, that's going to be in Morgantown, Pennsylvania, and again, that would come out of the training budget, four-ten, four-two-two. That, the acronym for that is POSIT, it's just the next step in the supervisory training. And then my third motion is request to send Officer Kevin Zieber to attend TASER instructor recertification training, July twenty-fourth, Morgantown, PA, at a cost of four ninety-five. And that again, would come out of four-ten, four-two-two training budget. Again, it's recertification, he is our TASER instructor, and every couple of years, we have to send him for a recertification for that instructor, so that's what that's about. And then the last and final thing on my agenda for this evening is I'm just requesting an executive session at, after the meeting, at the end of the meeting. Discuss personal matter relative to the corporal promotion. I will be asking for new action tonight, something I want to discuss in the agenda. And finally, I'd just like to announce to the public and everybody that's tuning in through YouTube. This weekend, on Saturday, we're having a child safety seat check here at the police department. It's going to be between ten and three, the schedule is booked, but I spoke with Officer Zieber, who's our certified tech, and they can fit some people if people want to come and happen to just find out about this now. And that's all I have this evening, unless anyone has any questions to make.
Do you want us to use the motions now, or is it going to wait till the next one?
I think you wait till the next meeting, it's up to the board.
That's a question, yeah, but everything else will pop up till then.
Yes.
So the question is, do we want to just?
No, go ahead, someone wants to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we.
Do it, each, each one will do separately, can we do that?
Authorizing Sergeant Rimby to attend the patrol rifle instructor school through the NRA from August fifth through August ninth, Bethlehem, PA, at a cost of six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Well, I'll make, I'll, is that your motion for that one?
Yes, for that one.
And I'll say, what comes to your mind?
Yes.
Mr. Detler?
Yes.
Mr. Detler?
Yes.
No, yes.
Second one, request a motion for Officer Jeb Cooper to attend the police supervisor in-service training through Penn State Justice and Safety Institute from July eighth through July twelfth, Morgantown, PA, at a cost of eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
I'll say with that one, I'll, you should go right.
Yes.
Mr. Detler?
Yes.
Mr. Detler?
Yes.
Third one is request a motion authorizing Officer Kevin Zieber to attend TASER instructor recertification training July twenty-fourth, Morgantown, PA, at a cost of four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
And then I'll say with that one, I'll go with Mr. Detler.
Yes.
If you go on, yes, Mr. Detler?
Yes. Thank you, board, I appreciate it.
All right, I guess in our packet, we have monthly expenses, treasure reports, soratorial reports, we're reviewing for that meeting.
Correct, I want to make a couple of notes on that, I do not have the actual monthly expenses with you here this evening, she'll actually have those, you'll notice there's some gray areas on here, those are bills that she just received. So she, I have not had a chance to actually verify and then check those against this, so that's why that's not here with me this evening, but that is, if anybody wants to review that, they're more than welcome to stop by the office and take a look. Treasure reports are in there, and then soratorial report, I made a comment. So as Mr. Steve, our corner supervisor, one of the residents brought up, and believed there was some missing from the report, we found a way to actually check that, I want to really say thank you for your efforts to help us kind of figure out what was going on there. It turns out that some time ago, some of these accounts had dropped off the radar into the inactive status. So when somebody is placed in a lean status, we have to create a new account. So every time, I believe, they hit that, that threshold, we put them into a lean account, we have to create a new account, and then, once you create the new account, you actually have to turn that account on. So this goes back before Deborah and quite some time. We found three accounts that had not been building in a, in a while, we, we sent letters to all of them, essentially giving them an option to do a payment plan with us. And we've now also changed our procedures, so rather than what was happening in the past as well, if you had an account, let's say that the account number was five oh-one. Well, if that went into lean, you could have been assigned a number of twenty-three forty-two, if that was the next in the, in the line. So that's very inefficient, it doesn't allow us to keep a rolling track, so we've changed that, so now it'll be five oh-one dash one dash zero, which allows us to do a much better job of tracking, it can also do a rolling, essentially a rolling count on how many accounts they had to link with at that time. So again, thank, thanks, Mr. Steve, for that, that's, that's big help to us, and again, they, the services inside our, our media system are turned on, so.
What was the total of the three accounts that were, when that's in fact?
I don't want to speak for him, but the one, it, it goes back so far, I mean, the guy's never paid a sure bill in probably twenty years.
Correct.
So that, that, putting a number on that would probably be difficult.
The ones at least three years, the others were a year and a half, two years, we had it, we had it now, so.
Well, that, that'll be added, so we're supporting the administration.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take that. We'll see, we'll get it listed by, by my. Uh, Rich, we got manager's conference.
Okay, so our copier has come to the end of its life cycle, actually, the end of the copier life cycle was June twenty twenty-four, we've been looking at some additional options. There is a prospectus in your packets, basically talking about what options we have. We'd like to move to a colored copier, it's not something we need specifically a lot, however, I think it would help us, especially when we want to produce an app for you supervisors, if something comes up. So in, in that case, right now, to give you a comparison, the police department, I believe, is at sixteen, just over sixteen hundred for their copier, and then they pay a monthly fee, it's also based on usage. And that brings them out probably around twenty-eight hundred a year, I think, on average, is about where they're at. What we're looking at with this one is just under twenty-four hundred per annum, and because it's a flat rate fee for us if we do the specialty rent-to-own, if you want to call it that. Again, we can bring some more information to the next meeting, this doesn't have to be voted on tonight, but I want to make you aware of it, have you, have you taken some time to review the prospectus from Edwards Business Systems?
Yeah, because they may or may not be able to get it to you within the month before the other one's going to clutter.
Correct, however, I think we still have some time to work through this, our copier is, is still operating, but we're, we're coming close to the end of life cycle now.
I'm assuming this little logo here that you have is going on your one.
Yes.
I want you to research them.
We've researched two, I mean, we have the two, the one's a black and white, one's a colored black and white copier, so.
And, their names, please, you have to introduce yourself, see.
Oh, I'll introduce myself, Harold Steve, thirty-seven hundred Main Street. When this one here was dying that was in the office, we kept it here because it still had some light in it. I was wondering whether you considered taking that one and bringing it down and cycl calling this one out?
We could, that's actually very, very much an option for us, was also wanting to keep it up there and use it as a backup copier up there as well. So, you know, it gives us, I mean, we've, we've essentially paid for it at this point, we have to look at a different agreement for service to that, or be a bi-service as needed, I'm not sure what we have on that.
I don't think that may.
We may not have a service agreement on it at this point, so it may be as, as we need it, if somebody comes and looks at it, we don't want to pay for it, because it's, it's truly past its end of life, it's something we can put aside. Complication options, again, I put out, essentially just put out some, some requests for information on some different complication options. I've received one back, we'll give you a full brief in our next meeting, I'm still waiting on the other one, at this point in time, the one concern I would have with some of the other complication services, the Miller Drive in Pennsylvania. Had a great conversation with some folks about Pennsylvania having more municipalities than, than anywhere else in the United States, and it may actually have more total than anyone else in the United States, so it makes us somewhat unique.
That's because they're all convoluted.
So it may be. Just want to give you some updates on a couple of things that we're, we're working on, one is key control, so one of the things I picked up on coming into the township was that we don't have a really solid key control program. I don't think there's anything amiss here, however, we want to get our keys at some point, have them stamped, numbered, that would mean that we bring them back for, or have you come in for the day, number those, we have a stamp set, and then we'd have you sign those keys out. That just gives us a better tracking of who has keys and into what facilities we have them. I've actually shared that with Dennis as well, it's something we may look at down here, although many of his are now key cover, punch code access. Same thing with equipment hand receipts, what came up in sort of our equipment reviews, there were four pagers that were at one point given to the township, we're still working through one of, where one of those pagers may be, we want to get tracking on that, this goes back again some time. And we want to make sure the folks that have them, as they leave our facilities, if they're going to somebody's home, they should be signed for. We have radios can turn in, that's been updated now, so I think we're in good shape with that, that'll remain with us, it's our emergency management radio, it only really needs to be signed out when we have an emergency situation. Want to talk about evaluations, I've, I've worked with Barry on evaluations, he has his, he's working through his self-evaluation first, to see where he is and his goals, and then we're going to tie that in, and I have Sheila's actually already. That was, I know, an interest of having your evaluation program, and then at the end of the, at the end of the year, probably in the, in the August, September timeframe, we'll actually go through a formal evaluation, and that will actually be the right time to do that, because it will line up with the beginning of our budget discussions, so we can discuss raises and so on. So again, we're working through those. Just want to brief, again, this is something we'll bring up to the next meeting, I have the paperwork here for it, so one of the things we looked at was our open spaces account, the, and I, I have it here, we could also discuss in our parking reg, it's easier here. So right now, we have zero, we have zero percent interest on our parking reg account, and we looked at that and thought, you know, we, we can do better than that, so what, what we've talked to Vist about, and we haven't been able to do it through Fulton, which currently has the account. But talked to Vist, and, and they're willing to have a savings account for us, a two percent interest, that would be tied to a checking account. So at least we're earning a little bit on that, I think I put the email out on that for you ahead of the board meeting, so if you had some background information. It's not a lot, but as we bring some of these other places online, so many of these other developments online, particularly one we have pending here with fifty-five units, that'll bring in more money, and that'll start to increase the amount of interest that we have in that account. Could be paying for some things over the long run, and the first partner exit is a great place to do that. And the final item I have for hearing the manager's comments, Mutiny Links PAM's discussion, really probably misnamed there on my part. So Mutiny Links, there's some information in your packets on Mutiny Links, and also on PAMs. The Mutiny Links program, what we had discussed at one point in time was actually adding our onsite septic into the Mutiny Links system, which allows us to do that currently, of course, we build our, our sewer through Mutiny Links. We do that internally to ourselves, Gage uses PAMs, and again, there's some information for you in there that you, you know, I would suggest that you review. PAMs is a much different program than Mutiny Links, and, you know, really, it's, it's out of our hands, it's the township if we pass it to them, but again, that information's there for your review and for further discussion at the, at the next meeting.
Well, it's never out of our hands, it just seems like a more efficient, cost-efficient way to do it, we're still.
Well, what I'm suggesting, right, what I'm suggesting, sir, is that once it goes into their billing cycle, we don't have the ability to influence that billing cycle, that the individual homeowner has to call them, and we, we don't have that ability as we do now with Mutiny Links.
Little more user friendly the other way.
And I think on perspective, that, yes, we are. Sir, it's fine.
Any special fire company, and they're happy to get community defensive reports to review. And I, I do send his email, I remember, but I'll be here next meeting to discuss his.
So I can actually chat for Ryan for a little bit, just to give everybody a heads up, if Cheston Hill. up. If Chestnut Properties, 90-day MVC extension, no reason to not grant the extension, but he said that we could do that here tonight or wait until regular meeting. Street work update, just want to let you know, Mayan's Pride Oil and Ship has been awarded to Mark's paving. They have started crack stealing on golf course. We'll schedule Oil and Ship Wednesday's work. That's, Wednesday's school was out with summer break, and Barry's on track, on track with that as well. Paving project, so we just got Charlie's approval yesterday from, from the county. So what we're going to do is we're going to advertise on 514 and 523. We'll open a bids at my office on the 6th of June at 10:00 a.m., and then we will hopefully be able to award the project on, at the workshop on the 13th of June. We're still well within the window to do that. Again, your bidding is previously authorized. Doesn't require action. It's just, we want to make sure you have an update on that. Want to talk about Rockhold Bridge. Just so you're aware, we did go out to, actually Baron and I went out for utilities meeting. Med Ed was unfortunately not able to make it, but they did come out after that, met with Bill Whitney, the engineer. And at this point in time, what they're going to do is they're going to have to establish a couple of additional poles. I'm not sure what side of the creek that's going to be on. We weren't out there for it. And I, when I talked to Ryan, he wasn't sure either. But that's to run the lines, not only your Med Ed lines, but your service electric and your, your telephone lines. So that'll, that'll be done, and that'll actually get the project going. And then I want to say thanks to Baron, because he went out and cleared these trees that allowed them to make that decision. And then the scoping meeting for the bridge on Old River Road is 523 at 9:00 a.m. And that's to discuss the longer-term project, which is going to happen after the 724 bridge replacement.
Thank you. I guess we'll go to solicitor Ryan though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to update the board. You might recall a Commonwealth Court case, Coleman versus Parkland School District, which we talked about, which was a major interpretation by the Commonwealth Court on the Sunshine Act. Yesterday, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court granted a laccotter, which means they're going to, they're going to hear the appeal to the Supreme Court. And the issue that they have accepted for review is the interpretation of that statute. So stay tuned. It's going to be a year or so before you hear from them. But the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania did take, grant the permission to hear the appeal at the Supreme Court on that issue. And that's an important case, no matter what they do. So stay tuned. I'll try to keep you advised as long as I'm around. Secondly, some, several months ago, the board asked the chief to forward the working draft of the solicitation ordinance to me. I haven't had much of a chance to spend any time with that, but I anticipate having some time to be able to do that during the latter part of this month. So if things go as I hope, I may be able to revise the draft and then try to get it circulated to you guys so you can start looking at it. And last, but not least, I just want to alert the boards that I will be traveling with my wife on June 17th, 18th, et cetera. So I will not be at the regular supervisors' meeting in June. So if you don't replace me before then, just be aware that I won't be here. Unless it works out as any questions, that's all I have for you today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and evening board. First, on my agenda, I'd like to request the board's approval to use the skid loader on May 18th for the volunteering time with Parking Rec to move mulch. I will be volunteering my time. I'm just asking the board's approval to use the township's piece of equipment to move the mulch a little more easier than just hand shovels and a couple of wheelbarrows.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow Barry to use the skid loader on 18th.
You want to call Mr. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Betler?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Next, I'm requesting the board's approval to rent a mini excavator for a week, maybe two weeks, to do prep, to do two pipes on Hopewell Road. The reason for that being is the section of road that, that we're going to be replacing these pipes is extremely narrow. To get the backhoe across, I'd be in other people's yards. So using the mini skid loader is a lot less intrusive if there's a narrow piece of roadway, which this is.
Baron, when's the date on that, so the board can make a decision on whether or not to?
I, the, the date's to be determined.
Okay, so we have some time on that when it's.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have time. I'll just bring it in, in front of you guys. That's all. That estimated cost will be $2,400. We do have a line item for equipment drawings. So.
We'll add that in.
I do have quotes for the sign if you so wish to see them. This, this company here is Co-Stars, so there would be no requirement for free bids or proposals if you will.
And this is, this type of.
It is.
It is. And I don't.
Are you, is it close by here?
Is, do you have, do you have, do you have type of pictures?
You have the pictures.
Yeah, somebody's. Oh, no, actually, they come back in the back. I think Barry, he's got this.
Did it? Actually, so what they did is, I don't know why the one came up, why the old ones. Because they actually took the. So again, this will be utilizing the electric that's out there. There'll be no need for a secondary electric feed, uh, electric feed to that, which the other company required two feeds. That was quite an elaborate sign. So this will be, this could be utilized from literally anybody that has access to it can remotely enter data to the sign as they wish.
So what we'd probably do with that is it would be, you know, access by more than likely the chief and I, maybe Barry, and one other person in the office that would be able to update the sign with, you know, information on it. Actually, one of the ideas that came up today, we'll share more details as we flesh that out, is, you know, are we able to allow businesses to, to do that? Obviously, without, and we'd have to talk, it's probably to go to our solicitor, but could we allow a business to take out an ad on that? As long as we're not obviously expressing the same that we're coercing that business, we'll be able to look through that mechanism. That might help us actually pay down the cost on this. This is half the cost of the other one that we brought to your review at the last meeting. So I think the max cost here was roughly 3,200, and that included some additional add-ons, you know, on the 20-volt line, sign capital and some other things. So, yeah, just for your review at this point in time.
The last item is crack sealing and sealing of this lot. The crack sealing will be done by us, as far as Public Works Department. The sealing of the McAdam would not. That would, we would have to send that out to bid, which I'm asking approval to get, get bids for that because this is, it's getting pretty bad. It's actually, it works right there, almost needing a new driveway.
Do you want to make that?
The re, the reason I, the reason I bring this up is because there's a lot of discussion on line painting. There is no toll-tail, like, lines. There's no handicap parking spots. There's nothing of that sort. Everything is just painted up. So before, yeah, before we go and paint lines, maybe it's of interest if we seal this thing up.
Right. Just so the board's aware, what we would likely do, although there's been a more recent paving project, we would probably seal the other lot as well. We would look to have that included in this and then do the line painting on both. That one doesn't, I don't think, really get any, there's no crack sealing to be done.
There's.
Minimum. So, again, it'd be sealing that and then having a nice seal coat. And then what we would do is we'd do the painting again. That would also include the handicap spots over there. So just trying to.
Do you just want a motion to?
Thank you, courts.
I'll make a motion if you can give quotes for this. Finally. Well, this is. Mr. Gollum?
Yes.
Mr. Betler?
Yes.
Thank you, board.
No, no, sir.
Do you mind me again? I was on Cypress Drive earlier this week. Some pretty hefty potholes. Right as you turn on.
Where the, where the manhole covers are out?
No.
Okay.
This is right, this is Office 724. When you turn on to Cypress Drive. There's one on the storm store, store side. There's one on the left-hand side. In addition, Chirp Road at the upper end.
At the upper end?
Is pretty much route.
Okay.
Now, my question was, is, we're starting the milling and patching and stuff. Frequently throughout the years, we've had to do our sewer right-of-way, that's the alley there behind, between Scoop Deville and Old River Road.
Okay, yep, yep.
Well, I've got the other half as fire. I don't, I don't know if the other half has a name. I don't know. But any chance we could, as opposed to mine stone, throw some milling in?
Yeah, we can do that.
Now, I, I don't know what the timeframe is, but I think that there was some possible excavation going on there to make sewer repairs.
Okay.
So you might want to try to find that.
Yeah, I'll see what, yeah.
What is it?
Instead of putting the stump down and then.
3349 or something like that, which could have to do some repairs.
3377, I believe, is.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that. I'll see when they're going to do that, and then maybe it's, it's on, we can go through there.
It's a good use for those buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you could do me a favor, if you could send those to Barry and I so we can keep track of them, that's, that's good for us then, for the.
Oh, for the potholes.
Yep. That's, that's always just good for, it's a good way for us to use checklist and check them off as we get through this thing.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. So everybody, I think, has seen a lot of the work down at the park already. I know we've been sending out some pictures. We'll be posting those. New backstop is in. Still working on, I think the lots and the, the basketball court and the pickleball court have been sealed painted at this point. The lines are down as of a couple days ago.
Were they complete with that work?
I'd have to check for you, sir. Let me ask you. I don't, I'd have to go back and look at.
No, we have to get our cones out of there.
Oh, we have to.
Is the line painting complete to your knowledge?
That I don't have one. I know, I know they, I know they're down there painting lines.
They want them in the basketball court.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll have to, well, I'll have to, we'll have a chance to do that, so.
So pickleball. Why don't you look close then, when you look at it?
Well, since you're picking at it, why don't you?
I'm not picking at anything. I'm asking if it's complete. I'm not picking at anything.
Okay.
It's pretty obvious what the problem is.
Check on that.
Okay, we will. EAC is next weekend, sir. We don't have that. I don't have any updates from Park and Rec at this point, other than obviously you're aware of the mulch coming in on the 18th. They're going to be doing that work there in the park. And Jeff Boe, one of our board members, has reached out to scouts, and our folks are looking for some ways to get some food and water and other things in for the folks that are participating, and they'll be moving the mulch in. So. EAC, as you know, was moved. It's moved to next Thursday. So we don't have an update there at this point in time. And, sir, back to you.
Your business, all business, you got the township views on there, and that's just on there just to keep it on there, right?
Yes, yep.
Nothing new.
Nothing new at this point in time.
No, but we got a phone call from Exeter wanting me to put it, to put an ad in. I'm like, no, but when Robinson does want, oh, we're going to happily put in ad, and you can, and she's like, yeah, we're the ones doing that. I said, that would be a good thing. So I think we kind of need to start looking at seriously doing it. That way you can communicate to everyone who gets mail, what doesn't get internet.
I think we have a lot of priorities to get our house in order prior to a news.
Oh, but we want to be transparent. We want to share with everyone who doesn't have the power to access it.
Anything else before executive session, to the chief and the executives? Hold on, Mr. Steve?
Do ahead, Mr. Steve. You guys want to be transparent. We, as a coming public, get no information whatsoever other than this. Transparency would be, we get to see the bills. We can see every hole, I think, every jack. And in addition, I would have been able to sit notice a month ago that we hired a plumber to fix the UV light two years ago. He installed the wrong product, and we just paid him double again to do the same job and the same plumber. Why on earth would you use the same guy if he screwed you over the first time? He made, he didn't make good for that.
Twice.
Oh, yes, we did.
Well, I haven't seen that, so that's something I'll go back.
Well, that's because you worked there the first time.
But that was my point. He wasn't here to know that that dome did something.
But if we, as the public see that, we can't have that worry.
Mr. Steve, why, why, why would we pay the same mower guy to put the grass clippings blocking the drainage? You know, when you ask these, why would we not have the Boy Scouts pick up the sticks third year in a row, instead of our, our man with a little orange cart making load after load? You have, you have to be kidding me.
Well, the Park and Rec was going to work the 30th Hill. You and Richard for that.
It's not getting done. Go take a look at the park. Just go take a look at the swell.
I think you should go home instead of playing.
But in regards to the trash, if you were going down the road and trash fell off and birds broke, you'd be cited for littering. But if we're letting these guys blow a lot of trash across here every, every week.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let's go to the executive.
That's the main outlet.
You have to be kidding me.
Yeah, you got to talk to them about that.
I'll show you.
Yeah, that's not acceptable.
It's not private. We'll talk about that. We'll do it tomorrow.
You think there should be end lines on that court? Think there should be like a line here that says when you're out of bounds?
I don't know. I don't think that, well, do you, Barry?
No.
Honestly, I haven't been at the park. I.
Well, now, I would, I understand. I would wonder if it's, it's not regulation size because that's the three-point.
Well, they were there before.
But that's, but that's a three-point.
There needs to be an outbound.
Yeah, but that's a three-point line. A three-point.
We're worried about lines, and you want to talk about what's in building. Let's go to the executive, guys.
Now, are you requiring this YouTube stream to be stopped again during the executive session? I, I see nothing.
That was the point.
I see nothing of any, uh.
We should enough to tell you every time.
Is this the board's requirement? Does all, all make the same road test?
Yeah, that's fine.
What Mr. is literally.
It's, it's a violation of First Amendment rights.
Okay, just do what you're asked to do. It's not one. Okay, just do what you're asked to do, it's not one. Okay, just do what you're asked to do, it's not one. Okay, just do what you're asked to do, it's not one.
Seven forty-five with other technicals. Seven forty-five with other technicals. Seven forty-five with other technicals.
Yes. Okay.
Before, before we adjourn.
No, I have a question. No, my turn, I had a number your turn, my turn.
Before we adjourn.
Mr. Allen, did you, where did you get the RFP? Who made that RFP, from Mr. Bettler's information?
As far as I know, that RFP, I did not review the RFP when I was at this time, uh, it was.
How can you not, how can you not review an RFP?
But rest in peace, and listen. How about if you listen and shut up?
I have an RFP here that, that is full there.
You tell them to shut up, Chris.
Yes, sir, and that was the template that was changed.
And, and how can you do that, that's my question, how can you do that?
Because how the other Rich did it, if you speak quietly, listen.
He just advertised it.
You're rich, you're rich, is the one who made it.
He just advertised it. Stop it, all of you, right, just let, let him answer his question, his probably concern. It's not mine, Rich.
Fair statement.
It was not sent to me prior to its release, so, did not catch some things that apparently were in error in there. However, it, it was previously done, the only thing that was changed, to my knowledge, was in fact my name in there, that's it.
It's unacceptable, it's unacceptable to perform like this, period. The executive session, in addition to the personnel matters that were police matters discussed for. The executive session, in addition to the personnel matters that were police matters discussed throughout, I'd like to give the public as much info as we can, including disciplinary actions about employees, et cetera.
No.
That's the best I can, uh, the best I can disclose at this point.
No.
All right, I don't know, there's nothing to disclose, so, anyone need to make a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else at eight.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seven, do we have a second?
I'll send one.
All paid her?
Fine.
All right.
Fine.
Are we requiring Mr. He shuttle one minute after the meeting about your requirement yet?
I think that's.
I, I think there's still public discourse that can, that are, and that's further violating the First Amendment votes.
Do you ever give up or walk off?
I, I shut this off only on the protest, we can continue this question, this is a public forum and a public meeting, we can continue this discussion right now.
We just adjourned. You don't listen to anybody.
Is that what you're requiring?
No.
You're, you're requiring, she said, yes, okay, on the protest, we'll turn that off, there's great public discourse can be going on right now, folks, we're missing out.
No, just want to create more drama.
We have to shut it off then.